Okay, I'd like to call the Wednesday, December 5th, 2018 Brookline Select Board Meeting to Order at 6:34 PM. Okay. Do you have any changes to the agenda, if any? I'm going to make a note that Smart Switch, our contractor, is going to be running a little bit late, so I'm going to ask that we move up possibly our communications and pay orders early.
You can do anything for that.
Okay. Because he has a pay. Yeah. And all this, 7, 8, 9.
7, 8, 9.
Item 7, 8, 9, early.
Yep.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Move on to unscheduled members of the public. There are none. Move on to approving the minutes from the November 20th, 2018 Select Board Meeting. There are three pages of minutes. Any changes to page one? I didn't see anything. Hearing none. Page two of three. Any changes to page two of three? Hearing none. Page three of three. Any changes to page three of three? I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes from November 20th. Ask presented. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the November 20th Select Board Meeting, asked and signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? There you go. New business. Shall the town appoint an agent from the Select Board to represent Brookline at the tax sale scheduled for December 6th, 2018? Discussion and appointment if warranted. Tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, there'll be a tax sale. It's been advertised properly. The delinquent tax assessor is Guy Tanza. He's also our town agent. He's also our town clerk. But he can't, but there's a conflict of interest as the town agent and the tax collector to represent the town. So I'm willing to represent the town at the tax sale tomorrow. Anybody else who would rather do it?
I can't do it. I can't do it.
And to bid the amount of $33,88.65.
I'm sorry?
And to bid the amount of $33,88.65.
How's it, $1 over that? If they get the place, how's that work?
I'm sorry.
When you do it, they have one year to pay the taxes. That's the, those are the taxes that are owed when you pay the taxes and interest from tomorrow.
Lawyer fees, penalties, that's the...
What happens in the meantime?
In the meantime, he still owns it because the title hasn't exchanged, but he has a year to redeem it. If he doesn't redeem it, then the town owns the property, has the right to sell it or do anything they wish to do with it.
Okay.
So...
I can't do this. Conflict of interest.
Okay. So...
I don't know why else I can't do it.
So I think we need to...
We don't need to vote, I don't think, but I'll accept the appointment from the Select Board under consent.
Yeah, I think you should vote that you're electing her as the agent to...
Yeah, I mean, I guess I move that we appoint Doc Maggio to represent the town at the tax sale on December 6th.
Okay. May I have a second? By Bruce, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of appointing Dorothy Medjoe as the town agent for this tax sale for tomorrow. Am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, do we have to discuss about whether we are going to bid on it?
I did.
No, she did.
For $3,388,061 is what I would...
That's what the town will bid on it. The town cannot make money.
Okay. So we're going to move on to item number seven. Old Business, Sunny Lane Daycare. Chris, you want to put summary on that?
Sure. Okay. I can do it. It's not much. Basic. Hi, Chris. I'm going to get acclimated.
And I'll keep her on. He can be acclimated while, he can listen while he takes his stuff off.
Nervous about getting the budget back.
Well, I'm hoping that we can get through everything else before Smart gets hers.
Okay. Okay. Very simply, everything which I'm talking about for Paris at this point. What happened is we had a zone valve go in the preschool room. Scott Bovac came there first and tried to find out what the problem was. He pushed me over on it. Mass Wall said it was. He asked me to involve Jeffers Plumbing and Heating. Scott really doesn't want to deal with too much in the heating end of it. So they did come and look at it and found that there was a bad zone valve and they were ordering, as of last Thursday or Friday, they were ordering a zone valve. I haven't heard. I'm getting ready to call back tomorrow morning because I have a meeting. And he's supposed to get back to me early this week and have it done along with service in the boilers. All in one fell swoop. And I also was trying to instruct him to, no, wrong set of words again. Trying to get him to be our on-call-a-guy and service our boilers, our program with the heating system for the item. And he said, "That's fine." And I've been, there's one worker there that he thinks is pretty familiar with the whole heating system way back when it was put in. So the way, what I'm moving forward now is kind of hoping Mark Billson will be here tonight because I'm trying to coordinate, which is a little different subject, the drain issue that we had. And the exchange of filters are all used. Scott Bovac's work was nasty. Change those. Do the stuff I want to do in the attic with Mark on Saturday. He did call me back and said he wants to do it, da-da-da, no problem. But I also asked if he would consider taking the tiles off, some of the tiles off on the rec room, the downstairs room, in order to find out what's wrong with that plumbing. And if not, to keep on going and maybe cut a section of that sheetrock in the entrance way going to the storage room to find out what's causing that drain issue and try and fix it. Paying him $25 an hour instead of Scott Bovac $100 now, $100 now. In coordination with trying to get Dave to come in about the same time so he can be like a backup while I have him work on the inside doors. Because Dave and I took a hiatus for a couple of weeks, or he took a hiatus for a couple of weeks, to get things done for the winter. And then he's going to come back in and fix any doors, inside doors that are screwed up. One's hanging off by the, one's hanging off completely. No screws, no nothing. And then there's the door, there's two doors in the basement that are not right. And I haven't inspected every other door, but I figured one more, you know, thing. I'm going to go over and check them all and kind of fix them, but have him be there with Mark at the same time so they can kind of get back.
Yeah.
Help them and I don't have to be involved with it.
Uh, please...
That's about it, I think.
Uh, I'm going to...
Oh, one more thing?
Go ahead.
I would really like to give you all an update as to how, what we have for balance, if anything.
I think you emailed us though.
No, I only told you the amount that was spent on the repair, on the stuff we did, meaning Dave and I. That was the parts and the materials. I'm talking about what, if anything, we have left on our budget at this point.
Did I do it during the budget session?
Can, but I need to see the pay orders and see how current it is.
Okay. We're going to do the pay orders in a few minutes.
Yeah.
So we're going to do the pay orders before we do budget, so you'll have that information.
Good.
I am going to pass down to you two things. One is the job description that we have for the property manager that Mark has. You might need to update it if you're going to add additional duties to Mark's list that he's agreed to.
All right.
And so you can bring that to our attention next month, next Select Board Meeting. They wanted to add something, we can retype it. And the other is the vendor packet. I thought you were going to see them, so it never got mailed out.
I thought it was last week and a lot of it's happened.
Okay. So should this, so if you're not going to see them, we'll mail it out? Mail it out.
Mail it out.
Okay.
Because the way it's left now, I don't know what, if, the idea was to have been, I told him I was coordinating the building stuff.
Yeah, there's not, yeah.
So he was supposed to call back me and let me know when he's going to come in.
Do we have a mailing address on there?
This is just a mail. It's Jeffers Plumbing and Heating. It can be looked up pretty easily.
You will go out tomorrow's mail, so if I call Jeffers tomorrow morning and he's coming, I'll have you hold so I can give it to him.
Okay. Yeah. Just give me a heads up. I will mail it until tomorrow afternoon.
And next time, I'm not cutting you off, Doc, but next time we're going to do the lease and executive session. And by that time, I'll have a list of other, have that list that I gave you all back in the spring so you can see what we have left for work. Just a complete idea of what it takes and so on and so forth. And that's about it for me.
All right. Very good. All right. Communications. First thing is emailing, then we have regular mail.
Thanks for this. Thanks for this.
We got email and regular mail about a webinars for town meeting review and I, here it is, and Guy said, "If I have an appointment, I hopefully be back to get the, do the 12:00 PM to 1:00 PM webinar on model town meeting articles and morning webinars. It's free if anybody else has near a computer at that time." They also have it again in January. So I'll either get it this month or next month if anybody else is interested in learning about the town meeting. So that was an email. We also got an email from the loggers, which I'm going to ask that we, we had talked to Sam Borum and invite them in January to come to a meeting. Okay? And regular mail, it looks like we have some appropriations. I think that will come with the appropriations. Let's see. Other regular mail, the email on USM, Mark Pickering, Vermont Agency of Transportation. It says, "Please find the invoice and proof of payment for the collet replacement." So this is for the collet down at 5:05.
5:12.
5:05.
5:05, I think.
5:05, yeah. And reimbursement allowed at 80%. Total submitted cost was $100,053.34. Reimbursement allowed is $80,042.68.
I think that reimbursement should be $90,000. We are, we, it's not 20%, I believe it's 10%.
Okay. Well, it says contracted invoice from Daniels was for $99,950. And that check was paid to them. There was a total of $103.34 for town employee labor costs, for total cost submitted funds. I'm just letting you know, it's here. I'll pass it around for people to take a look at. That's been approved and we came in, we had three board members sign it last week so that that money can be sent to us. And as far as I know, that's the only other mail except for our appropriations, which we'll do in the budget session. Okay? Next, we'll do payroll and accounts payable. I came in and did payroll, so I'll pass it around for you to take a look at. I'm going to review over the accounts payable and then I'll pass that around for you as well.
Thank you. Hold just a minute here. I'm out of the employees. Okay. Look at that. See, I'm going to do this next year.
Is it for the speed of...
It's not because I want to. I could tell you if we can make it. Whatever.
It is basically... I got my tickets to the London Series.
Oh, you did? Oh, you did.
Haven't figured out the flight stuff yet. I know the flight. I did buy the tickets worth. How expensive they are for like upper deck seats. Yeah. Okay.
We had a Sam visit.
I'm going to show you the...
Oh, yeah. I saw it.
Oh, right. What was our neighbor?
I don't know.
Does he not look like Sam?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm paying $600 for two tickets to both games. And these are like, I couldn't get anything on the field level, or I did, well, I didn't want to pay what I was going to have to pay. Now, it's at the Olympic Stadium, which is also a core of this stadium, so, I mean, for watching things, so it's not probably going to be watched.
Everybody saw this?
Did you see any emails? Did you see any of my notes? Yeah. Okay. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry. Yeah. I saw your email. Yeah, I didn't know what time I gave it. It was a little fast.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the payroll number 2019-21 dated 11/28/18 in the amount of $7,372.77. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chris.
Yep.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving payroll warrant 2019-21 in the amount of $7,372.77, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The election. Didn't see any control. Many valves except Dave's bill.
David's, yeah.
Dave's bill.
Okay. Towns and water testing again. I thought it was cut out down until like quarter of the year. It was day, it was weekly, it was monthly, wasn't it?
So that's a monthly one, I guess.
But it was cut off because...
Hasn't been cut off yet.
Oh, it hasn't been cut off yet? That's going to be okay. And that's it, just one page, okay? So Scott hasn't submitted a bill, but if he's going to, I don't know how long he was there. And David. Okay. I'm good. So we haven't received a bill again from Vermont Septic or Southern, what do they call those?
It was, no, not, that was recent thing, two weeks, three weeks.
No, that would have been, we're only on the fifth of the month, so chances are they didn't make it in by this.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a counts payable warrant 2019-22 dated 12/5/18 in the amount of $4,964.34. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chris. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving accounts payable 2019-22 in the amount of $4,964.34, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's passed and signed and in the records. Okay. We should start setting some of the agenda items for the next meeting, December 19th. I'd like to add into the December 19th an executive session to review the lease that you will have in your possession at that time for the Sunny Lane Daycare and the other items that could come up between now and then or at the end of the meeting that you can, if we might continue with some budgetary, final budgetary, I'll lay that. Okay. And I know in January we'll ask for the logging. I'll communicate the two dates in January that the loggers might be interested in coming in to talk to us about that. And I'm also going to be asking Jordan to come in to give us an annual review from Rescue Inc. So that would be for January.
And regarding the town report, no one seemed to object, given the lack of response, I guess.
Oh, you'll have my support this next meeting.
But no one objected to not doing the reports.
Hard to believe.
Cynthia did say she could prepare something that could be handed out at the meeting.
Yeah.
And I figured that way.
Anybody can, yeah.
Yeah. That's right.
The only thing I'd like to add to the agenda is the possibility of creating an article for the purchase of the machine that we're considering.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Number 11.
We're here, Jerry.
Going home. I love it. I hope to watch Rachel earlier.
No, we go back to number 11.
Rachel reruns.
Six A Municipal and Highway Budget. So you know what? We have a few minutes here for some R and D here. I'm going to go through some...
I had a few updates to the municipal side that I'd like to, I would like to share with you in regards to the budget. If you recall, we had that budget worksheet.
This one?
Yes. Going down to penalties for delinquent taxes. We have projected $1,000. I'd like to change that to $1,500.
Where are we? Page one?
First page.
I'm sorry, page one.
Penalties.
Under delinquent taxes, any penalties?
Also $1,500?
Yes. Interest on taxes, I'd like to bump that to $1,100.
And these are revenues. Right. So that's good.
Current use we have at $10,000. The actual figure is $13,000.
I guess?
Yes. $13,071, I believe.
You want to just bring it around to 13?
Yeah. Put $13,500 in there, I guess, and that would be good.
$13,050?
Yep.
Wait. $13,050?
$13,050?
I think it's...
You don't want to leave it just at $13,000?
No, it's a little more than that. It's a little over 13.
You can deposit.
13?
No, not...
You're depositing here. I couldn't figure it out.
My wife could say that. Town under life. We're lying.
We'll have to share these with Samara because she'll need these figures to...
We can...
Clerk fees.
What page went up?
Same page.
So sorry, what did we settle on, though, for a number for current use?
$13,050.
Yeah.
13050.
Clerk fees?
Yeah.
You changing that to clerk fees?
Clerk fees, we have it $4,500. I'd like to change that to $3,500 based on the amount of things we're getting in. And the restoration revenue, next page on the top. We have it at $1125. I'd like to change that to $825.
$825.
And that's all the change on that for them.
$825, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for digging in, guys.
Yeah.
If we turn that to...
Just, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, more.
Uh, age.
I'll see more. Two.
Like this.
Three, four.
On page four.
Where it says computer services, maintenance, support.
Yeah.
That should be $900?
We didn't have anything on that one.
Right. I researched that. And the fire department services mutual aid dues is $9679.
Fire department mutual aid?
Yes, that's the, some of the, that's the figure that they circulated around.
Can we just back up one second, though, to the computer services maintenance? So, okay, so you dug into it and those Samara thought based on, but it turned out to analyze how problems wasn't accurate.
We missed the payment, so we got a double. That's why I saw it at $1695. I researched that.
Okay, cool.
And basically, that's what we're paying for the four computers with Dan Neal.
Great.
To our guys.
And you said the mutual aid, those mutual aid dues that you spoke of?
Yes, that's the fire mutual aid dues.
The $9679, right.
And then we go to the next page.
Before you go to the next page...
I got nine.
Okay. Well, let's, we got three things here. We have rescue services, fire department annual request, and fire department mutual aid dues.
The bottom one.
The mutual aid dues is $9689.
$9679.
$79. $9679. I make a note that the rescue services sent us paperwork.
Okay. And I thought we, that's in the...
We got in there.
It should be updated.
It's right above it. Same thing. Same, same page. And...
And what was the figure for them?
I just saw it. Hold on. They have a line number on each page. Monday invoice.
$15,327?
$15,300. Well, this one here is...
Over.
$635.
$635.
This is for 2122. This is for 2920.
Okay, this is the number one.
So $15,327.60. $15,328?
For 2019, 2020, rescue services, $15,328.
Cool. While we're on this page, do we have fire alarm while we're on this page?
I didn't see that fire.
We don't have fire, but the annual request.
$9,000.
I think the $9,000 is a, is a art number and the mutual aid dues. If I remember the annual request, Gary said he was going to level fireworks.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And everyone underneath is the mutual aid dues, which, we have that number. So I think the $9,000 is still going to be good.
They're talking about the fire alarm budget.
It's below computer services, fire alarm.
Right, the fire alarm budget.
That's all right.
Oh, yeah, we had $400.
It was the one we didn't have.
Yeah. Got paid in May of 2017, fire alarm.
I guess we'll have to see what Samara has on it because basically there's...
Is that when he comes in to test?
Right, to check all the things, but he doesn't do it in a timely fashion and sometimes he skips a little bit. So I'll have to see what Samara, what he finally charges, the amount of money that I just skipped my mind. So $9679 is for the other one.
$9679. Right. And $9,000 above that and $15,328 above that.
Yep.
So that the only thing that we have here, Chris reminded us, the fire alarm budget. Okay.
The next page.
Okay, next page.
Dues VLCT is $1656.
$1656.
Uh, VLCT.
Yeah.
We have it down at $1,700.
Yeah, $1656.
$1656.
The Wynn Regional, I thought we had something in there, but maybe, I don't know. Maybe Samara has that information. That's her purview, so I don't want to... The county tax, again, we won't, they don't vote on that until God knows when. Those are all the changes that I have.
And we still have, oh, never mind.
I'm going to make one, well, I said this while, Samara, I'll point this out to Samara as well, but while we're close to it, the WMD landfill fees.
Okay, what page is that? I'm sorry.
It's the same page, we're just on...
55.
Page, yeah.
We should have numbers.
$3650 is what we expect it to be, but I will say that there's a public hearing. At the last meeting, we voted to approve that budget, but it has to go to a public hearing, which is next week. And then pending the feedback on that, we then vote on it for real. However, there has been some concern expressed by Brattleboro about some of the revenue side of the budget being too optimistic. So there is, we haven't had a meeting. We have a meeting next Thursday.
Is Brattle...
It's possible that we might, there might be some revisions voted, in which case that would impact our, our charges would go up.
Yeah.
Because if our revenue projections go down, the assessments will go up. But I don't know. But it's not nearly as set in stone as it felt like it was a couple of weeks ago.
You have the recycling cost?
Well, so I think we, I think Samara needs to be here and we need to have a discussion about that. About what we do with it, but anyway.
County tax.
County tax, we don't.
Well, it's costing us $115 a ton. We're paying $130, $140 just for the tonnage and then $130 for a truck to pick it up. So you put those two together and multiply that by 52, but that...
Yeah. I have a little spreadsheet of stuff that I've gone through on all of our costs.
But it's changed now from weekly to now almost every four days. And that's going to change the inclusion.
Yeah.
Yep.
When's it coming out?
Well, you're supposed to... I called them. I called them. Well, you're supposed to, I called him, I called him tonight, he'll be here tomorrow, because it wasn't like that this morning.
What? And wasn't that fair this morning?
No, no, I, I don't know what's going on, but there's.
Are you serious?
I'm dead serious, I monitor it every day.
I know you do. Wow, I looked at it and I said, whoa, we'll be dumping today.
Yeah, so I made an emergency call at four forty-five and I left a voicemail, because I thought we would get, when I looked at it yesterday, I thought we could get through to Friday. You know, trying to get as full as possible before they take it away.
Is this more trouble than this?
It's, I don't know.
Again, I mean, if we want to get into a discussion on it, I just, I don't think we should do it before Samara's here, because I think we're gonna have to go through it all again.
So what can we just, we can do appropriations?
Some people will be put out of appropriations.
It's a psychical policy.
When it's always.
Is this what we did, that we approved that dump at the ready?
Right, exactly, so it's not like the cost of this is gonna go away, we're just gonna pass it to all of us individually, and our costs will be considerably higher than even if we, even if we exponentially increase what we're paying for it, it's still going to be a lot cheaper for most of our residents than keeping it cut. And we're gonna have the dumping situation.
So I didn't, anyway.
But anyway, that's what I'm saying, I don't think we should get into a discussion about it until Samara's here, because we're gonna just have to do it all over again, because I think her input is valid and needed on it, so.
Let's take a look at the mail I got here regarding appropriations, although we. So, um. I have appropriations list of requests received through twelve, five, eighteen, which is updated. So everybody has the same hand that I have?
Yes.
Okay. So.
Off the bottom.
Yes.
So, um. So we have here very quickly, American Red Cross. No change, any, we're just gonna, how do you open those, sorry?
Can we go line by line?
Can we go by line by line, American Red Cross requested the same amount as last year, uh, two, two hundred and fifty dollars. The, um, current requested a hundred and twenty dollars, twenty-five dollars. Gerta's Echoine Rescue did not request anything as of today's date, so that's going to be filled in with a zero, you can't go on.
Because we take the cut off, isn't it?
Well, the cutoff was October, but.
This is it.
Grace Cottage Foundation has a request of an increase of two hundred dollars over the three hundred, they have requested five hundred dollars.
Do we wanna discuss these as we go, or do you?
Well, that's what I wanted to do, that's why.
So American Red Cross, we're keeping it two fifty?
They had asked for two fifty two years in a row, no increase.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Where, where, where we at, I'll go through.
We're going back to the top, okay, so this is, select board approved a request of two hundred and fifty dollars. The current has requested a hundred and twenty-five, no increase.
Okay.
Is that approvable? Anybody opposed to, I'll say it that way, anyone opposed to?
Yeah, I mean, I think what I, what I'd say is really, we're going to vote on this, well, more, we're going to go through by consensus and sort it and vote on the entire, entirety of it.
Okay.
Because quite frankly, I don't wanna vote to approve two hundred and fifty for the American Red Cross if later, at the end of it, we find that we wanted the number to be lower, you know what I mean? I don't think it makes sense to vote on them.
So not to vote on each one?
Because we're locking ourselves in.
So we're just gonna say what they're requesting?
It's why, it's why we don't vote on line items of the budget.
Right.
So that's what I was doing before I.
Yes, no, so I'm just saying, I think what you're doing is fine.
Okay, the current has no increase, they're asking for a hundred and twenty-five dollars again this year.
And Grace Cottage, we're, we're discussing later.
Um, Gerta's Echoine Rescue did not request anything at this time in writing, so this is zero at this time. Grace Cottage Foundation has requested five hundred dollars for the fiscal year, uh, which is a two hundred dollar increase. Greenup Vermont.
We're gonna go back and discuss it, is that the way to proceed?
Well, I think, let's, let's discuss the Grace Cottage as we go through them, the, so they've requested a two hundred dollar increase of the.
Right, they tried to get, they asked it last year and, and.
Well, that was, that was a local citizen that was trying to get it increased, not to, without any names.
Right.
Although, although I will say that they did submit a revised.
Request.
Request for it after we had already approved what they'd originally submitted, so it wasn't just.
And what was the revised, revised request?
I think it was five or s.
Five hundred, that was five hundred.
But that's almost a hundred percent jump.
Wait a minute, the five hundred, okay.
Right, so. Well, I. We debated this, and the increase was voted down at town meeting as well, because it was brought up to increase.
That's true, that's true, Chris.
That is correct.
Personally, I would level it at three hundred still.
I agree.
That's how I feel as well.
Yeah, I feel the same way. It's a money-making operation, and I think it's good.
So we're looking at level funding it at three, at three hundred dollars.
Yes, yes.
Okay, moving on to Greenup Vermont, they requested fifty dollars.
Yep.
Any problem with that? Level funded, um, the Groundworks Collaborative.
They're the word I wanna give. I buy my own stuff.
Yeah.
Groundworks Collaborative has asked for level funding of three hundred dollars, what does Groundworks Collaborative?
I was gonna say, what do they do? Do you know, Guy, what does Groundworks Collaborative do?
I believe that's the new word for, um, I think you're right. Remember they had the shelters downtown in Brattleboro, up there on South Main, uh, South Main Street?
They combined two service organizations into under one umbrella, that's correct, so that is for the needy. Anybody have a problem with the level funding this again?
I don't, no, not at all.
The Historical Society of Wyndham County asked for level funding of two hundred and fifty dollars for appropriations.
Local.
I'm in favor of funding.
LNG Education Foundation has not requested any money, well, that's because it's been in plus. So there is no appropriations request, so that's a zero dollar.
Can I ask a question about American Red Cross? So, is this like a local chapter, or is this the national organization? Because they get a lot of donation.
It's the Wyndham County, I believe.
The Wyndham County chapter, if you remember.
Yeah, I think the funds that we give, if I remember correctly, stay in.
The community.
In the community. Pretty sure that's the way.
Yeah, I like these, that, yeah, for people.
Um, moving on down, Morphe Library has asked for an increase from two hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents, an increase of thirty dollars and fifty cents, we did get a letter from them, let me pull it out here.
Did we not increase that last year by fifty or something?
Um, I have my magazine.
I believe it was two hundred to two fifty.
Was it?
Yeah, now I will say, it is a valuable resource.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
So the Morphe Library.
It went from two twenty-five to two fifty.
Asked that you please place its request for two hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents donation from the fiscal year of twenty twenty funds on the morning for the March nine, two thousand and eighteen town meeting. It reflects approximately a dollar eighty-seven per the app. Hundred and fifty library patrons residing in Brooklyn. We sincerely thank you for your generous donation last year, this is the fourth time we have asked for town donations, but are increased services not limiting, not limited to fiber optics, internet connections, increased adult child programming, Thursday evening library hours, expanded interlibrary loans, and at-home downloading of ebooks has all been acquired based upon our community requests. In addition, we have replaced the first floor windows with new energy-efficient ones and removed the stethos from the basement. We look forward to scheduling library visits and crafts for your children at Sunday late and going to the new book schools. We very much appreciate the support given to us by the individuals and the Catholic line, and well, with your financial donation, continue to provide enhanced library and community requested services that enhance the life of all Brooklyn residents.
If we were gonna increase one, I think the library is a valuable one to increase. And if we need to balance that out, I think we can look for other places to balance it out.
Well, I think it kinda balances out, because we don't have to give anything for Leland Gray.
And, yeah, and Gerta's a postdoctoral.
I totally agree with Chris's note.
Yeah.
So we're looking at an increase of thirty dollars for the year, so two hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents appropriation is sufficient for that.
Yeah.
Moving on, Project Feed the Thousands designated to the Townsend Food.
They didn't send, we didn't get a request.
Okay, so we're not, so they're gonna?
Well, but usually what they do is they send a kind of a pro forma request with a little postcard, and I bet they send it out on a standard schedule, so.
I think we already said that we're not gonna fluctuate, because we just can't say, okay for you and I'm okay for somebody else to get in.
I don't care, it's fine, I'm, I'm just telling you, what I think happened is that they send out a general thing, and you designate it to the food bank you want it to go to, and I'm sure they're on a, like a bigger schedule than our, we set our schedules, so tough tootsies for them, I guess. Except that it is a service to people in town use.
Any other discussion on this?
Does our county?
No, it's too bad, because I would, I would be in favor if, if they'd actually submitted a request for it, but I don't think we can, if we haven't gotten requests, we can't. We can't assume what it would be, so.
Yeah, I, I agree, I mean, they never ask for a specific amount either, just so you know.
So you're, you're saying is we can appropriate without a request?
They're a different beast.
Uh, like the precedent setting, start allowing random appropriation.
Well, we can't like, we can't do it for one and not do it for the other.
Correct.
The rule is, you didn't send a request by our cutoff date, then it's cutoff.
Right.
Yep, it'll only happen once, I bet.
Yeah. All right, so listen on here. Okay, so let's leave that play, Senior Solutions has asked for an increase of a hundred and fifty dollars from their original five hundred dollar donation for a total of six hundred and fifty dollars for the next fiscal year.
Little thirty percent increase. Why?
I don't think any of these are the senior solutions. So I don't. Oh, we can wait for Samara to come in, if we wanted to ask for that Senior Solutions, we'd do it for Brooklyn.
Well, right, and I guess maybe just try to see whether there's a reason that they gave for why they increased our request.
Right, right, so, well, you know what, let's hold on this for a moment, and we'll come back to Senior Solutions. Sevka has asked for a flat funding of six hundred, four hundred and sixty-five dollars, which seems reasonable. Anybody have any comments about that amount for appropriation, flat funding it?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, Valley Cares is asking for flat funding of eight hundred and twenty-one dollars in appropriations, any discussion on that?
Favor of that.
Vermont Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired have asked for flat funding of a one hundred dollar appropriation for next year, any discussion on that?
I think we should.
All right, the Visiting Nurse Alliance has asked for an increase of two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, for a total of one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars appropriations for the town of Brooklyn, any discussion on that?
Twenty-five percent increase, why?
Yeah, I guess that would be another one, that if we can track down the letter and find.
Right, because I know that they came into town.
That's a lot of money. It's a lot of increase, I mean.
All right, we can hold off on that until Vermont comes back in, okay?
Senior Solutions line.
Vermont Center for Independent Living has asked for a flat, uh, it's a flat figure of eighty dollars again for two thousand and twenty, any quick discussion on that?
That seems good.
Okay, uh, the West River Watershed Alliance, now known as the Southeastern Watershed Alliance, has asked for a flat funding of one hundred and ten dollar appropriations for them.
Yep.
Llandon Casualty Society has asked for flat funding appropriation of five hundred dollars, any discussion on that?
I just need.
Favor of that.
I just, I just need a copy of whatever you guys.
We still have some, we're gonna have some questions for you about it, once we've got.
Oh, key to. The Women's Freedom Center has asked for an increase of a hundred and forty dollars over their five hundred dollars request last year, for six hundred and forty dollars.
I think this, my memory is that they did the same increase request last year, we just left it where we had been doing it. I'm, I'm fine with five hundred. Like, keeping it.
I need to see your justification for it, to have an increase.
Well, we'll hold off on that a minute, a minute, we'll, we'll do those three, the previous two and this one in a minute. All right, the Youth Services has asked for an appropriation of flat funding of two hundred and fifty-five dollars, any discussion on that? Two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Samara, we have a couple of questions for you on appropriations.
Give me a question.
We had managed to bless you, um, project, explain again, of, what, Project Feed the Thousands.
Project Feed the Thousands, so what happened was Townsend Food Bank used to send in, send in their own rep, requisite, request every year, because that's the local food bank that serves our population, the Brooklyn's population that needs it. And, um, what happened was, was that Project Feed the Thousands took them on under, as one of the food banks that they solicit for, and so one year, we actually voted.
Double.
Double, so we, and, and the Townsend Food Bank is like small and few, you know, hodgepodge volunteers, the same as, same as our town. And so, we eliminated, the Townsend Food Bank stopped sending their own request and get, get their funding through Project Feed the Thousand. Well, this year, their postcard is probably gonna come in.
Tomorrow.
This next week, you know, or this week, and the other one was Gerta, Gerta sent back an email saying, yeah, we're gonna send you a request as soon as we can, but. Now, you can see when the email went on, it went out a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but, you know, nonprofits are what they are, and like, the Women's Freedom Center is still addressing it to Penny Harrington, my blessing, you know, from their system that way, so. Well.
So then, do we wanna look at those three that we?
I'll, I'll give, so that was Project Feed the Thousand did not, did not put in for a, uh, that was the first one.
Well, Gerta's is missing, Gerta's Echoine Rescue is missing, they didn't.
We agree that those.
Leland Gray is missing.
Yeah.
And Leland Gray.
The Leland Gray is always late.
So Senior Solutions.
Is there Leland Gray going to be, well, hold on, let's do one at a time here, what do we wanna do about the Project Feed the Thousands?
I don't think we can vote an appropriation for something we haven't received a request for an appropriation to, so it's nothing.
And everyone was aware.
Right. And if, if we, you know, someone from the community, heck, I might even do it, because my wife volunteers there. At town meeting, we can bring it up, if we receive a request later for it, and encourage people to add a hundred dollars for them at town meeting. So it's, there are other avenues for it to happen.
And it, that's a logical approach, I think. Uh, the Leland and Gray Education Foundation amount of two hundred and fifty dollars, is that changing because of the Act forty-six reorganization?
I don't think so.
Is that why they didn't send?
That's, Peter Meyer's brother does that, Stephen Meyer.
It's a foundation.
Yeah.
It's separate from the district, it's not part of the school district, it's like a, an out, and a separate nonprofit organization that does scholarships for local students. I don't know how their scholarships are awarded, it's not like, there are several scholarship funding organizations. One of them, the Kroll family, like gives out twelve thousand dollars a year to people who apply, or are recommended, but, um, and the, the Leland and Gray. And the, the Leland and Gray Foundation, I don't know how that works, but they ask for donations, like any must be a.
But we didn't receive anything that I know.
I'm gonna put on my notes here, not this year, and if, if something comes up at a town meeting, then that can be brought up at a town meeting for a different. Or someone comes to the next board meeting, I guess. I don't know what to say. All right, moving on down, let me see which one I.
Senior Solutions.
Okay, Senior Solutions. Just sent in, you have theirs.
Okay, so Senior Solutions.
The question is why, what's the service that would require the increase?
Oh, why an increase? Well, they sent a pretty detailed letter, so I guess you guys should review that.
Yeah, you must have it there then, okay. Because there's some, there's some more that's not on this list that's in this mail that I just found.
Okay, let me see where Senior Solutions is, but I, I'm pretty sure I put a copy in your mailbox tonight. I'm ninety-nine, ninety-two percent sure I photocopied that, but.
Senior Solutions?
Here's Senior Solutions again.
Okay, you know, I see these segments, see these things.
Appropriations here, Valley Cares here, it's right here.
Their new paperwork.
No, I didn't, it was too late in the day, I couldn't have.
So Senior Solutions, of their increased request of six hundred and fifty dollars, they sent us an annual report on aging. Nature, they'll pass us around.
I mean, you guys have to decide on merits of what they vote, I think.
That's really bothering me.
I mean, I will say that there's nothing in their cover letter that explains why they would be requesting.
It does.
An increase.
Yeah, you have to read their annual report.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I skimmed everything.
You know, they break down how many helped in Brookline, et cetera, et cetera.
And their request is predicated on numbers?
They actually, I actually know seniors who've used their services.
No, and I'm not, I, I, I think our, our question is not.
Oh, no, no, I mean, I don't even have votes, so I should just shut up.
No, that's why, I don't care, because we need some input.
Oh. Well.
Yeah, five hundred dollars last year. Two thousand eighteen was five hundred, two thousand nineteen was five hundred. They're asking for an increase of this. Yeah, our, our population in Brookline is gray.
Is gray?
Five hundred and ninety-two meals to Brookline residents.
Danny, it's an organization that serves a lot of our population.
Right.
That's one thing I know anecdotally. But it's. So senior requests.
I'd be willing to consider.
There's a thirty percent increase. Yeah, I mean, I, I guess in hindsight, I'd be kind of curious to see what the numbers of services were last year versus this year.
I have last year's.
They do receive grants.
I don't know if Sarah's cleaned this out yet, because we're getting ready to put it together for this year's meeting. I have her working on this. Oh, yeah, she's emptied it, so they're in a folder. Hang on, I'll have to go. Yeah, this is empty. Oops, ready for this year. Have to get it out from the this year's folder. Appropriation.
So it seems to serve a, actually a small amount, it's like one resident, one resident, four residents, but those four residents receive almost six hundred meals. Thirteen calls to.
Okay, this is twenty, this is last year's, so let's see if I can find them. I don't know that they're in the Alpha Order at the moment, in the morning.
I think you're gonna see a constant uptick to appropriations because of the political climate in Washington DC. And I think that's.
Well, everybody's, everybody's, everybody's budgets are getting cut, the federal money has gone from a lot of places. You know, my niece, my niece works for a nonprofit whose federal funding got cut back in the early on.
So that's what's generating, I think, the.
Yes, here's Senior Solutions. So, yeah, I think it says actually in their annual report, they make mention of the fact that they have to rely more on the communities, the local communities, they serve, that's last year, this is last year, I remember trying to, I'm about being, I got too much paper. I just wanna keep last year's separate from this year's.
Last year's was the same amount?
Kind of interesting, it's exactly the same.
Except for Medicare assistance. Medicare assistance.
I would just be interested to compare.
Compare, so go ahead.
We might be from one, from fifty-two residents to one residence for Medicare assistance, but then one elder received the same thing. Four Brookline seniors received the same amount of meals, and they had thirteen calls for information.
It's not.
Thanks. That makes, it'll probably make sense, that makes sense, okay. But also thirteen calls for information both years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
You kind of one year.
If we had, if we had unlimited funding and we were in different situations, I would probably be in favor of increasing, but I.
We're not in.
I would, I'm in favor of level funding this.
In fact, the listing for Medicare assistance went down by fifty-one people, from fifty-two to one, so it's like less services.
Well, I'm gonna call them this year for information.
Good, all right.
So you could add one back.
You'll be number two. So I would level fund.
Senior Solutions were looking to level fund at five hundred dollars for the two thousand twenty, twenty twenty, five hundred dollars, okay. Senior Solutions.
I mean, are there other people on the same page?
I agree.
I think you should level fund.
Project Feed the Thousands, you just talked to Senior.
Visiting Nurse Alliance, which is the next question.
Visiting Nurse Alliance, okay, that was another one that I, I have information on.
You do have them?
Youth Service, the Library, Main Society, Grace Cottage.
Visiting Nurse Alliance, VNH, here, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure, well, here, here's visiting nurse.
So Visiting Nurse is asking for the amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty.
Twenty-five percent increase.
Okay.
Why?
There was a hundred and thirty home visits for three residents with short-term medical or physical needs in the town of Brookline. This included approximately two thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars in unreimbursed care to Brookline residents.
I'm looking to see if I can find last year's, if you can, if I can, if I can dig it up. Visiting Nurse, Vermont Association, oh, let's see.
That's this year's?
Yeah.
Valley Cares, I don't know, Vermont Center for Independent Living, oh, here it is, here's the Visiting Nurse report from last year. A hundred and twenty-nine visits.
So one less visitor last year.
Yeah, four residents, um, last year was almost thirty-four hundred dollars of unreimbursed care.
Mission is less reimbursed and you want more money, correct?
Less reimb, less unreimbursed.
Does anybody want to see that?
And one less visitor last year than one fewer resident.
You know, the other thing you guys should consider. Once we fill in all the numbers in our budget and run a tax estimate based on the grant value, then you should allow yourself time to readjust numbers. So if things have to be cut to make our tax rate not skyrocket, or if we're gonna decide to apply, you know, whatever. They're gonna be, once, once I get all the draft numbers in, remember, I'm gonna run and estimate what this all does to our tax numbers. So leave yourself enough, you know.
So we're not gonna vote on accepting this tonight?
No, no, you're a long way away from that.
That in January, we ended up accepting the voting.
We have to set a tax rate, we have to set a number, and we have to vote on it and get it recorded in the minutes, but you're at least two, three meetings away from that.
Right.
Visiting Nurse Alliance, what do you, we, we see that there is a.
I feel it should be level funded, same as last year.
I agree.
I agree.
It's a thousand dollars less of expenditure, so level funding for Visiting Nurse.
And the only one that went up was the library, I believe, by thirty dollars.
That is correct.
But just use the lot by our residents.
But we haven't, we haven't increased any, level everything.
Yep.
Okay, I can go something on the Women's Freedom.
Grace Cottage Foundation, would you guys decide?
Three hundred.
Three hundred level funding.
Yes.
Women's Freedom, and Warfree Library, you did.
We did.
It's the only one with a grace, right, guys?
Yes. There you go.
Now again, we're working on the Freedom Center.
There it is, well, my one, Women's Freedom Center, during the fiscal year, July through June, Women's Freedom Center responded to seventeen hundred hotline calls, sheltered a hundred and seventy-three people, thirty-five hundred contacts. Okay. Transportation and childcare to one thousand two hundred and fifty people, of which, like, the name, how many were abused? These figures include at least three survivors from Brookline. In addition, we provided community outreach activities, including school presentations and workshops throughout Wyndham County. The Women's Freedom Center is a private nonprofit organization heavily relying heavily on community support to provide our free and confidential service. We thank you for your town's contributions to the Freedom Center and hope you will look at it as an investment in creating a future free environment, something we all deserve.
Okay, so the numbers that you were getting at the very beginning of that was generally throughout the county?
Correct. You're saying of, but of those numbers, three of them were Brookliners.
Right.
And the Women's Freedom Center is looking for an increase of a hundred and forty dollars.
That's almost thirty percent. Yeah, really.
Take a look at that.
Well, you know, this is what they have to do, asking is free.
Right.
Asking is free, well, you know, people will give what they can, and you ask for what you want, right?
It's like a car salesman, I want twenty thousand dollars.
Well, it's a little different than a car salesman. Bad analogy for.
Well, you know. Sorry.
It is true, you know, people will ask you for increases. The Grace Cottage request reminds us that they have not asked for an increase in eighteen years from us. That they have been receiving three hundred dollars for eighteen years, that's what they have asked.
I mean, I guess what I would say, and I think most of us are approaching it this way, is that my assumption is to be level funding things unless I feel compelled and there's a strong argument otherwise, and unfortunately, the Women's Freedom Center, I don't see a strong argument otherwise, so I think we should level fund it as well, okay?
And none of this means offer a valuable service.
It doesn't apply a value to any of these things. All of these organizations are valuable and deserve to have more money, but unfortunately.
And it is one of the higher appropriations that we are making, five hundred dollars. It is a high appropriation compared to the other ones. All right, Youth Services is asking for level funding, here is their letter of two hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Do you have any coverage?
I think we already.
I think we're done. No, not done, because I have one over here.
And we have these three other new ones listed.
Valley Cares, we already did, right?
Valley Cares, so, we did, right? Everyone that asked for the same amount was okayed, is that?
Yes.
Yes, we didn't eliminate anybody.
Except for Warfree. So once they come in.
Except for the ones.
War went up, the ones that didn't come in, we didn't give anything to, anything else.
Okay.
Except for library.
Right, okay, so, um, that was the Valley Cares, we already talked about them. The new ones.
I have one here from Southern Vermont Therapeutic Writing Center, Mr. Tanza's representative, they're requesting an appropriation of five hundred dollars from Brookline for fiscal year twenty. We serve twenty-one clients in the Southern Vermont, with several who reside in Brookline and neighboring towns. Along with the care of our equine team and equipment maintenance, we will underwrite the cost of lessons for many of our participants without subsidies. These people with special needs who would be unable to afford this, don't participate. This is in Wilmington, Vermont, the center is. This used to be at Winchester Stables, and now it is up here in, in Wilmington. They work with participants foreign older for special needs, autistic spectrum disorders, multiple sclerosis, attention deficit, hyperactivity, spinal cord injuries, blindness, intellectual disability, cerebral palsy, and anxiety, and requires individuals to assist in them with that. How about you take a look at that, and they are requesting five hundred dollars.
If memory serves, they requested funding last year.
Yeah, I remember talking about Wilmington.
Did not.
You did not, correct.
The only one on the lower, the lower column knew or declined in the prior year, the only new one is something called Recovery Alliance, which I know nothing about, and they.
Wasn't that like rock concerts or something? I thought we had an email or something, it was like.
I don't know, no.
I had that next.
Okay.
So, I mean, I personally don't think we should, we should do an appropriation for.
No, I would say, no, I would say that.
No?
No.
Here it is. The next one is, actually, I didn't realize you had it on here, uh, we go to here. This is. Let me guess this around. glance at the cover letter here. So nonprofit creating, created for public schools, recovery centers, and others, and the latest proven studies approach this. Approaches and such designed specifically to target youth before they turn away, turn to any form of addictive behavior. They do school, local school, live streaming presentations on drug and alcohol issues. We, they have identified youth in Brookline that fit these profiles. Our programs have been reviewed by educators, law enforcement, and rehabilitation professional. We are seeking financial support in the amount of five hundred dollars to continue to work at the New Brook Elementary School and Leland and Gray High School. So much needed information that directly addresses addiction prevention for those students.
So first off, I was way off in my description, and we had some email at some point asking.
Yeah, right, there was.
Yeah, there was, there was something weird last year, you're right. I can remember that. No, you didn't dream that one up, it was real.
Well, it was true.
Video for me, but I wouldn't make a joke, but I don't know, it's probably.
Probably not.
So they're saying they serve our schools.
New Brook, again, you're working with Leland Gray.
I wish there was some way to vet this organization. I thought their, their letter was brief and it sounded like, you know, how do you, how do you, you could look them up on Guidance Star, see if they exist as a nonprofit.
Yeah.
I would think with all the guidance counselors and everything else that the schools offer, that, you know, another, another organization is a little redundant in what's going on in the schools already, I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, I think we're in a situation where it's, the onus is on new organizations to convince us and demonstrate the benefits that they have.
Well, they're explaining here what they do.
That doesn't convince me.
No, I can't.
I mean, not, yeah, I mean, it.
Personally, that was sort of my reaction to.
What's that, good? What's that good?
I would suggest...
It wasn't clear enough, and there's nothing with this spelling showing up. Yeah.
What?
And you did...
On GuideStar, it's recovery normal spelling shows up multiple times, but...
Yeah.
I guess probably, I guess you're looking into it.
I would, I would say it wasn't a Mary Wood appeal personally. If I were, if I were like a grants administrator from a foundation, I would turn that one down.
We're no different than the other town we have. We can't approve everybody that asks for something.
Well, and I do think, I do think we probably ought to, going forward, maybe we start looking at even more, really spell out what the criteria are, and how, what they have to demonstrate, and what they have to provide.
I don't so much agree with what Glenn's saying, but I agree with the approach, but I got a problem with it as well, because it doesn't seem to be clear to me as to who they are.
I don't think it tells us enough about them. Like I said, it wasn't a very good pitch. If I were a foundation manager, that's what I would say. Wasn't a very well put together pitch.
We are from here.
They don't really have a website.
They don't? They just got a W, they just got an email from us.
I mean, they don't even list if they have a board of directors or anything.
Yeah, you gotta inform them.
So, I mean, if, when you're asking people to give you five hundred dollars, you have to provide some sort of credentials.
Yeah.
And your story. So I see.
It's not fifty bucks.
Even if it were fifty bucks, I would, I always check, only fifty.
Okay, oh, I'm not gonna quit, I'm not gonna quit.
Yeah.
Okay, that's right, I understand that.
Just so we're, what I will say is that there is a Brownlboro reformer article about them, so they are real thing.
Oh, well, that's good, good, that's, that's...
It was in June of twenty eighteen, it just says, uh, they were applying for USDA rural development for equipment to, for social need regarding alcohol, drug, and opioid addiction. And then it said they're located in the old Baptist church. So it, it does show they're real.
That's, that's good.
That's just the same as Valley Thrives, you know, there's so much redundancy in some of these programs.
Well, there's a need for them.
I agree with that, but...
I don't know if there's redundancy, because there's a need, but I think that, I think that it behooves organizations to demonstrate their credibility.
I agree with you, I don't agree with you, and it's almost like when...
And we're a small community, and we don't have deep pockets.
Right.
That's true. Or maybe, maybe we should consider a smaller amount.
I, I, I say no.
See, you know, I'm conservative that way too, Glenn, but, you know, I was one of the people up at that Leland Gray meeting that they were getting ready to kick out the social worker.
But they kept it.
And they kept it, and my argument was, forget bringing it back two days a week. I'd like to see it five days a week. So adjust your budget and give these kids the attention they need, because we got a serious problem in this state, in this country.
We do have serious problems.
With this issue, and no, I don't want redundancy, no, I don't wanna overpay, no, I wanna be conservative. Yes, I wanna be conservative, but I wanna be sure that they're not a valid organization. And I don't agree that it's duplicitous at all.
Well, Dan, we don't have to make that argument tonight, we just have to decide whether it was a pitch worth...
I say they have a website, it just wasn't coming up.
I'm, I'm just asking the board to, to generally keep it open for the time being and see how it goes, and we can all discuss it down the road. See if you get any more additional information. No, I don't wanna just throw away money, no, not, not the intent. The intent is to see if these, the kids that need it can help. We don't need any more suicides here in this town. We don't need anyone in the community. We have a very, very, very serious drug problem in this, in this community, and we gotta accept it.
Which time, Chris?
R E K O V E R I E dot org. The site cannot be reached, so...
So, yeah.
Uh-oh, uh-oh, now I'm getting shot.
Well, they're normally small and struggling, and they need to, they need to receive money from people.
Necessarily any indication of anything, but, but again, I think to Samara's point, we're a small community that needs to be responsible with our money, and that's, it's not a very compelling case.
Not that we have a lot of time. But via to a select board meeting and stand up for the five hundred bucks, that's a lot of money.
If, yeah, but I don't know if we're gonna go, I mean, thank you.
Not this time of the year, though, but...
No. But, and maybe we can, and maybe we can put that in our turndown letter.
Yeah, I, I understand your point, you didn't make a strong enough case, I'm with you.
And, you know, when foundations get, get hundreds of applications, they really do look at the quality. You know, and we can't, we don't have that same level of sophistication. I think we have to, we have to mind our pennies.
Well, I can't agree with that.
So at this point, REKOVIR Alliance includes a new appropriations request for five hundred dollars. Where do we stand on this?
It's recovery.
I'm unfortunately opposed to funding them.
I, I believe at this time, at the moment, yeah, unless you have more information on them or provide a better indication of their benefit to Brookline.
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see them, these smaller...
I think the letter, the rejection letter can detail how they could better make their case.
Okay. I'm gonna ask somebody, you know, when, not now, but maybe later, like when we're not in the thick of this, to draft some rejection letters, and we'll send them out after town meeting.
Yeah, or they can come to town meeting and state their case. Five hundred dollars is a lot of money.
If they wanna come to town meeting and state...
Every, every town meeting that we have, or town that they're applying to, who knows?
Maybe those ones are approving it, we're not.
All right, okay.
And I don't have a bigger organization.
Anything else on my list?
So right now, we're table, they're not gonna approve it. Right?
That's why I asked twice, somebody said, we already did that.
Seveds.
I think so.
Okay.
Seven, six, eight, two, fifteen. Yeah, they are asking for, uh, what you see here, one thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. That's per, per person, three dollars per person, I believe that they are. It's, um, they, well, they can come, I'll pass this around.
That's the, we, but we, we said organizations...
Right, I mean, I think we've had, we've had lengthy discussions in the past about not seeing a particularly substantial benefit to our community. So certainly, in relationship to their amount of money. Not that the amount, I mean, it's just, there didn't really seem to be a substantial benefit, period, regardless of how much they were asking for. Yeah, exactly. I think we should turn it down again.
Yes. All right, so going through my list here, we, we okayed the American Red Cross at the current, flat funded, flat funded the current. We have nothing for Berida's. We, three hundred dollar appropriation for Grace Cottage, fifty dollars for Greenup, flat funded the Groundworks Collaborative, flat funded the Historical Society. We have nothing for LNG. The War Free, we approved the increase of thirty dollars and fifty cents for funding that value of two hundred eighty dollars and fifty cents. We have nothing from Peak the Thousand Senior Solutions. We are flat, we are, we are denying the increase and flat funding them at five hundred dollars, SEVCA. Flat funded at four sixty-five. Valley Cares is flat funded at eight twenty-one. Vermont Association for the Blind is flat funded at a hundred. Visiting Nurse, we're retaining the same flat funding of a thousand, denying the increase of two fifty. Vermont Center of Independent Living, flat funded at eighty. Vermont, uh, West River Watershed, flat funded at one ten. Five hundred flat funding for the Humane Society. Five hundred dollar flat funding, denying the increase for Women's Freedom Center. Youth Services were flat funding at two fifty five. SEVCA, we're turning down. Southern Vermont Therapeutic Center, we're turning down.
Well, no, SEVCA, you're not turning down SEVDS, you're turning...
SEVDS, SEVDS turned down last year, we're turning that down. Southern Vermont Therapeutic Riding Center, we're turning down. And REKOVIR Alliance, we're turning down.
Recovery.
So if my math is correct, we're down one hundred and sixty-nine fifty from last year.
Uh, no, we're, I think we're down, well, I think we're down more like four hundred dollars.
We gotta be down one...
Four fifty. Four nineteen fifty.
Four, minus four fifty, plus thirty.
I did something wrong. They started a riot.
Right.
Minus four fifty.
Okay. All right, so we have our appropriations pretty well tied together. There may be an item or two that comes up later on, if you want to be flexible with it, but we moved past that. Okay?
Uh, you just wanna review the, the changes that we did that...
Four hundred and nineteen fifty.
Because Samara wasn't here, and you got to that, those changes, the increases and decreases.
Well, let's do the whole thing.
No, because Samara wasn't here with these guys, okay?
I've got, I just got the whole thing, I'm good with the appropriations. Is that what you're talking about?
No, we did, we filled in.
Yeah, uh, I changed some town clerk fees because I revisited, I did some research on...
If you wanna, um, if you wanna, like, just give me, give me the revised numbers, that would be great.
Okay, page one, we revised, uh...
Clerk fees, two.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Uh, page one, current use hold harmless payments, we changed that number to thirteen thousand fifty dollars.
Thirteen, thirteen thousand...
Fifty.
Oh, five oh.
Got it.
Mm-hmm.
Then we went down thirteen...
Above that interest on taxes?
Yeah, we, there were a couple other ones.
I had to do it in different colors, so I'm sorry.
Start, start from the top and work your way down.
Palate's fifteen hundred dollars. Interest on taxes, one thousand one hundred dollars. Current use hold harmless, thirteen thousand fifty dollars. State per parcel payments, three hundred. U S deconti funds, one hundred. Silo fines, nil. Listers education, nil. Clerk fees, three thousand five hundred dollars. Dog license, five hundred. Fishing hunting license, nil. Copies, nine hundred. Marriage civil union, thirty. Birth and death certificates, nil. Records restoration, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Animal pound and revenues, nil. Reimbursements, nil. Interest on investment, ten. Okay. Next page, I'm just gonna go through that real quick. Select ward sixty-five fifty, broken commissioner five, town clerk twenty-one five sixty.
Wait, which one?
Okay, thirty-four. Track treasurer tax collector, fifty-nine hundred. Delinquent tax collector, thirty-six hundred. Listers, three thousand. Auditors, eight hundred. Health officer, nil. Assistant town clerk, sixty-five hundred. Assistant town clerk restoration, one thousand one hundred. Listers reappraisal, zero. Election officials, four hundred. Assistant treasurer, so there's three people in that, that's eighty-three hundred. Select ward clerk, eighteen seventy-five. Animal control officer, five hundred. Payroll taxes...
I, I, I filled it, I, it's, I filled it in. I just, I'm not reprinting budget reports until we're done, done, because everybody, you know, it's too much paper.
Yes.
So that's still TBD?
TBD.
It's determined, I'm telling you, I put the number in, but you haven't seen it yet.
Payroll service fees, twelve hundred dollars. Page four, supplies and postage, forty-five hundred dollars. Supplies, town report, twelve hundred dollars. Planning commission expense, one hundred dollars. Abatements, two thousand five hundred. Legal notices, six hundred. Seminars and mileage, a thousand. Electric, town office, eleven hun...
Eleven hundred?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I had.
Eleven hundred. Brookline Church, two hundred and fifty. Town office phone, one thousand seven hundred fifty. Town office fuel, twenty-five hundred. Brookline Church fuel, fifty dollars. Computer service management support, nine hundred dollars.
Excuse me, uh, Brookline Church building fuel, there's a minimum charge of sixty dollars?
Actually, they charge tax, it should be fifty-six dollars, but is that the right address? Six thirty-two? I looked, I was looking, is that the Brookline Church building? There's a tank fee, there's a minimum charge of fifty-six dollars.
And everyone taxed and everything else, it came to what, sixty?
Yeah, but, but they shouldn't be charging us tax. We're exempt.
That's right. Okay.
So...
So fifty-six dollars?
So make it fifty-six dollars, or fifty-seven.
Well, why don't you just level it at sixty?
Okay, we'll make it sixty.
That's budget sixty dollars for it.
Well, budget's sixty, but I, I put a big note on it. I didn't, I held that bill, because I wanted to tell them, they shouldn't, I'm taxes. First of all, I couldn't find the, I couldn't find the building in our RAM list.
That's the wrong address, no.
That's what I thought, I couldn't find it. Okay, fire alarm.
All right, so, uh, Brookline building fuel, sixty dollars. Computer services, maintenance, support, nine hundred dollars. Fire alarm, we did not have, we were gonna ask you about that.
Okay, I tried to add it up, I think, I think three hundred, I think we're over a little bit, but because it's got pushed, it got paid, it got paid ahead and paid late one year or so, you know, so we kind of bundled it up a couple issues, so I think if we put in four hundred dollars, that's plenty for the term.
Okay, fire alarm, four hundred.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, legal services, three thousand. Rescue services, fifteen thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars.
Yeah, I got that.
Annual request for fire department services is nine thousand dollars. Fire department mutual aid dues is nine thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars. I actually get that typed in too. Okay, next page, copies, a hundred and fifty. Lease contracts, one thousand three hundred and fifty. Property maintenance, one thousand two hundred dollars. Trash removal, zero. V L T C dues, one thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars. Wyndham Regional, we don't have that. Do you know what the dues are for that?
Uh, no, yet. They always send it late.
Yeah.
Wait, did they send that?
I thought that...
I thought I saw that.
Well, we can call Chris up and see.
Wait a minute, let me see, if I have it, it's in here. Here's Rescue Inc.
It was predicated on our population.
It's predicated on our population, they always send it out late, I bet we have everybody this. No, I don't have it in this folder. This is my budget folder. And I have Rescue Inc., and I don't have, I definitely have, wait. Where's my break? Here's, here's Rescue Inc. No, I don't, I don't have it yet.
Okay.
But, we could put in, for argument's sake, you know...
Twelve hundred dollars?
Well, yeah, whatever it was.
It was one thousand one hundred ninety-six for two thousand nineteen.
And it's gone up a little bit, so, yeah, put in two thousand twelve hundred?
Uh, twelve hundred. One thousand two hundred dollars for dues from Wyndham Repending, with asterisks. Repending actual, okay. Nemrix software, twenty-two hundred. Landfill fees.
You had three, thirty-six fifty?
David mentioned that there is going to be a board meeting vote and taking a look at some of the Bay Chain.
There's the potential that that might end up going up, after, after the public comment and stuff, possibly.
Okay.
Hopefully not, but it might.
But it will be less and won't be appropriated this year.
Yeah.
There's no guarantee of that.
Okay.
Until it's been, honestly, until it's been approved, there's no guarantee.
Why don't we finally put in for recycling costs, because everybody's...
That was, that was what we were waiting for you to come and talk about recycling costs.
I would like to suggest that we at least finish the rest of the municipal budget before getting to that session.
Law enforcement, we put in five hundred?
Five ten.
Five hundred ten.
Five ten.
Five ten?
Yeah, at least upon ten hours of...
There was just so many hours yet.
Law enforcement, what, five ten? Insurance bonds, six thousand dollars. Old cemetery, two thousand for maintenance.
County tax.
Well, we won't get that until they vote on it, you know, that's another one of those. But you can be sure it's gonna be close to what it was.
Yeah, who do you call, who do you call at those two budgets?
Patterson is the, is the county clerk, and she's down in Brownlboro now, but basically, they have a regular budget meeting and they vote on it.
Yeah, well, that's kind of like, that's what we're waiting on for WRC and county tax. They have their budget meetings, so we can find out when their budget meetings are. But we can put in numbers for working.
You can be sure it didn't go down.
I know.
Did you wanna put in a number or just wait, wait a bit?
I'm gonna put in same as last year until we have something.
Fifty-four hundred dollars.
You know, just for...
I have an asterisk, Bay Chain.
Yeah, I put an asterisk on that, still, okay.
Animal impound expense, three hundred. Fire permits and other miscellaneous, fifty dollars. That's on page five. Go to page six. And we start with highway. Okay, so I'm just gonna clear my space here a little bit, I feel. And we'll take a look at. Alright, so now we're on highway operating expense. Last year appropriated was one hundred fifty-eight thousand five hundred and twelve dollars. This year we're gonna do nine thousand.
Wait, 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 where are you?
Page six.
Nice.
Page.
The revenues for highway.
Yeah, 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 cross, it's cross-dotted.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's why.
Yeah, that number gets filled in when it's ready, but.
Current taxes, state aids, better backroads grants, permit revenues, interest on investments. What number should be put in there or are these all?
Better backroads grants, we never budget for grants, because we don't know, but.
State aid is solid.
We actually do have a grant coming in that we know about, which we could put in. It's gonna be done, let me look at the dates on that. Because we have that roads inventory grant.
Right.
That was granted, that isn't counted yet.
Right, was that the fifty-three hundred dollars?
No, it's not, I don't remember the exact amount. It's not a lot of money, but.
Isn't like eight or nine thousand?
We, we could put in the, if we put in the, if we put in the revenue, we have to put in the expense. So it's probably pointless, it's probably washed, never mind.
Uh, better.
It's a nice idea, but I, I wouldn't put it in, because it won't.
Ninety-five hundred dollars. I believe, the better road, better, Vermont better backroads grant?
There's a couple of them.
Yeah, that one was, the total amount of the grant was seventy-six.
Ninety-five hundred, the total amount of the grant is seventy-six hundred. But we'd have to put in ninety-five hundred dollars in expenses. So let's leave it out for now, because that doesn't make sense.
Okay. Permit revenue, we.
Sorry, did you say state aid is?
State aid will be flat.
Thirty-eight thousand. Thirty-eight thousand.
That's supposed to be the same.
Current revenue, sorry.
Okay, permit revenue?
Where have permits been this year? I don't even remember. I don't post again.
Permits, I think those are, what we're talking about is the, um, Albert cuts and also the overweight permits. The overweight permits, uh, five dollars for single and ten dollars for a fleet.
Have any come in?
Not a lot.
No, we don't, we don't get a lot this year. A lot of people just aren't filing, because there's no way we can enforce them, unfortunately. The only time we seem to get them is if there's an Act Two fifty or something where they have to, because, you know, they're doing their trucking. But there's a lot of people that just, for whatever reason.
I do wonder, remember that one year we took a deposit for road damage?
That was for a logging thing?
A logging thing.
Yes.
We should be, we should.
A bond.
We will probably do that when we develop our policy.
Yeah, well, we need a policy for that. It's on our agenda. Cool, good, good, good.
So permit revenue?
I was, yeah, or zero, I mean, in the scheme of things.
Or cut it in half at least.
And whatever we get is, I think we make sixty.
Alright, permit revenue, fifty dollars.
So what is that, fifty dollars you put in?
Yes, sir.
I'd cut it in half, and I'd do the same for interest, because our cash.
Interest, a hundred dollars.
I'd put in a hundred, because our, our interest, our bank balance has been much lower than usual. We used to have about two, two hundred thousand dollars cash, and we're definitely below that.
Alright, so that's the end of page six. Go to page seven, which is highway operating expenditures. Summer salaries and mileage, including emergency and special work. It was adopted at seventeen two thirty in the past. Do we want to propose any changes to that? Yeah, actually, two thousand eighteen was, oh, was the, was eighteen one?
You're on page, you're.
We're on page seven.
Highway financing expenditures?
Highway operating expenses.
This is typically where the road commissioner has to weigh in on what you think.
Summer salaries and mileage.
And you had mentioned before Samara got here, right guy, that.
Oh, I see, okay, I, I know.
Generally, you're looking at more.
Basically, level funding, and the reason I'm asking that is that because if we, if we craft a, an article for the town meeting to purchase this particular machine, that's gonna hopefully change what we need for that thirty-seven thousand, thirty-nine thousand dollars. Because we rent right now, we pay almost twenty-five thousand dollars a year in rental fees. So by eliminating a lot of that, and the, the amortization for that loan is about fifteen hundred and forty-two dollars a month for five years, which is eighteen thousand dollars a year. So you take eighteen from the thirteen, from the thirty-nine.
Seventy thousand dollar a year times five, about times five, thirty-five thousand dollar savings.
So basically.
Much more work done.
But, you know, but out of that thirty-nine thousand, we're still gonna have to bring in people like tree vendors and so forth.
Yeah, there'll be things that can, can, won't do.
Dump trucks. Alright, so then I'm gonna, we're gonna move along.
So it's not all gravy as far as a comparison.
So basically, what I'm saying in essence is that to level fund the highway budget as it is from last year.
Alright, I'm gonna go through with that. Summer salaries, seventeen two thirty.
Okay. He's, so road commissioners suggest we level fund.
They level fund all of them.
All of them, so I don't need to be the.
So if I just write level funding, we don't have to level fund all categories?
So that means that it would be one, one hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars appropriated for the revenue and expense budget for the highway operating expenses.
One eighty-two. Good guy.
One eighty-two five fifty-nine.
Good job.
No, no, then you also have to add the ten thousand for the.
It's already on, it's behind, it's there.
So it comes to one ninety-six eight twelve.
Plus the financing cost.
Good sell.
Page, alright, page eight, we have the ten thousand for bond principal, thirty-eight sixty for bond interest, plus one eighty-two five five nine. Okay, plus for operations.
What's that?
What's that, one hundred?
Basically, it's.
Ninety-six eight twelve.
One eighty-two five five nine and the.
Just right here.
This number here, one ninety-six eight twelve.
So that leaves us with.
Okay.
Yeah, I just cut off that number, get the.
From the bottom of the.
So we're gonna look level funding?
Yeah, that's what you did.
Yeah.
That's what you did. Okay. So you don't, you're not increasing the town equipment, fuel cards, et cetera?
No. So how much?
We could probably take a look and see, I mean, let me put the numbers in and see what it does to our tax rate.
Well, what was your question about the highway?
So that new piece of equipment, how much realistically you think is to replace all the work?
Okay, in, in that video of thirty-nine thousand dollars, out of that thirty-nine thousand dollars, we are, we are renting each year close to twenty-five thousand dollars. Because that's what we pay for Mark's equipment, other things that we have to have trucked in and so forth. This machine will probably eliminate, I'm gonna say close to half of that, or let's just say the worst case scenario, a third of that. And if you take fifteen hundred dollars times twelve, that's eighteen thousand dollars a year to fund that machine. We will own it in five years. And going ahead, looking ahead, the first couple of years, yes, it will be a wash, but after that, we'll own that machine.
Right.
And that should really substantially eliminate.
Well, based on five years, we're still saving money for every year, you're just saying upfront, okay.
The other thing about it is that we control our own destiny, and if we want, we can maybe possibly rent that out. That's another, another thing that one could do, so we can generate some income from it.
How old is it again?
It's two thousand eleven, it's got a relatively low amount of miles. I had Mark check it out thoroughly, and he swears by it, he thinks it's a good machine, he thinks it's something we should own. And it's a tractor vator, it's an excavator, it's a backhoe, a backhoe, it does a million things. And it's got wheels, so we can use that for emergencies. We can go in and out, and we can control our own destiny.
So backing up, not that we want to get too carried away with talking about it now, but of the thirty-nine. Of the thirty-nine.
Well, that's easy enough to, for me to.
At the thirty-nine, I'm asking to take eighteen thousand dollars, which would be what our mortgage would be on that machine.
Right, and we, and we don't, we think that our equip, our current equipment rental is at least that eighteen.
Oh, yes.
That's easy enough.
That's what you're saying.
She thinks it was maybe twenty-five.
Yes.
Okay, that's, I just, I wasn't, I was doing some other stuff.
He's saying it was at least a wash for the first couple of years. Well, actually, yeah, I think it, actually, say, you're gonna, you're gonna plan as a, as an article to town.
We have to submit that as an article. Because you're not allowed to borrow money unless you get a town vote, with, only unless you're borrowing against a grant. There's one exception for that, which came up with the, oh, I guess because I was thinking about the salt check, whether you have to borrow for that.
Just for, okay.
And the culvert, our culvert money should be coming in another week or two.
Alright.
Recycling.
Alright, we're back to recycling.
We're going to recycling.
Okay, let's go back to recycling. I will be very, try to be very quick. Samara pulled all the numbers that we have for the recycling costs, and I will boil it down to, um, obviously, the costs that we're paying to dispose of the recycling continue to go up. Presumably, at some point, that will stop. It won't just continue to go up indefinitely. But if you look, I, I ran through all the numbers and tried to figure out if there are seasonal variations, because we were talking about whether can we really project what the remainder of this year is gonna be. But the problem is, because the cost of our disposal fees continue to go up, the processing of it, the, the trucking fee doesn't change, but the disposal of it continues to go up. It's a little, it's difficult to, to notice any patterns at this point. But taking the worst-case scenario, well, what hopefully would be the worst-case scenario, which may not. Our most expensive month by sort of total cost per pickup was, surprise, surprise, last October.
And that's what I've seen me up to.
And if you, if you, if you take that cost, if you take what that cost was with both the trucking and the processing of the materials together, and extrapolate that out for a year, and assume that we would have to do four and a half pickups a month, which we now might be doing more than that.
Right now, we're doing every four days. So if you took three sixty-five and divide that by four, that's how many pickups you're gonna have. And each pickup is costing a hundred and thirty for the truck and a hundred and twenty-five for the, um, material.
Well, it isn't always a hundred and twenty-five.
No, it's, yeah, it varies.
It's more, it's less.
It's, yeah.
It's a hundred and ten one time, a hundred and seventeen one time, I mean, I can look.
So if you did two fifty, two fifty a, a shot, you know.
Right, so there's, I mean, if, yes, if we, if we genuinely are at the point where we have to pick those up every four days, then we're looking at.
Fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars?
Oh, no, we're looking at thirty thousand dollars.
Boom! Wow.
Because it, I mean, in October, like I'm saying, in October, it basically costs us an average of three hundred and thirty dollars per pickup. When you factor in the hundred and thirty for the shipping, plus what the tonage rate is. When you kind of average it out, it ends up being that much.
So let's say the worst case scenario is three hundred dollars, three hundred dollars per pickup.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worse than that, but yeah.
Okay, times.
But so, my thinking up until what you just said now, was that we were picked, because we have been until just a little bit ago. We've been averaging basically four and a half pickups a month, which is a little more than once a week.
Yes.
But not massively more than once a week. If we were able to maintain that at these rates over a year, we're looking at, let's call it eighteen thousand dollars.
Ooh, that's a fifty percent increase.
That's a lot bigger from eleven thousand.
It's a sixty percent, it's more than a sixty percent increase. But here's the point that I will make.
Yep.
Even at that increase, even if we, even if it was eighteen thousand, although maybe it's in a situation where it's even worse than that. But at eighteen thousand, if I haven't butchered the numbers, it basically, it's a sixty-three percent increase over what we funded two years ago.
Right.
What I'll say is, for a taxpayer who has a valued house of, let's say, three hundred thousand dollars, which I don't think there's a lot of people in this town that meet that. That works out to seventy-five dollars a year. I'll tell you, I would have to pay a lot more than seventy-five dollars.
Twenty-five, thirty dollars a month.
In order to get rid of my recycling.
Yep.
So, and I think the majority of people probably would. Some people would be able to get rid of their recycling, and it wouldn't necessarily cost them any more money. Some people are already driving to Brattleboro.
We already drive.
So you could do it, but, no, I mean, not very many people from Brookline do that.
No.
And then we would have the additional thing, like we've talked about before, if we don't have those bins there, where is all that stuff gonna go? Because there's no way that the same people who currently dump trash over the riverbank on Ellinware Road are going to pay someone to get rid of their recycling. So we would have, we would have a whole different problem.
If we could take out the commercial use of it, I think we can bring it down to that four or five day window. But there's been some commercial use, there's gotta be, I guess we have that letter enforcement.
How do we, yeah, how do we deal with the enforcement?
Practically, yeah.
Can't, it's not practical.
Well, you know what, there are things we could do. It would be inconvenient for people. I mean, we talk, you know, we could move those bins. We could move the bin and honestly, we could put it in the parking lot. And it could only be accessible on certain days. I mean, there are things we could do, they would all cost money.
In order to make it not accessible.
Would they cost?
Well, two things happen in there.
This week, somebody dumped off a twin bed. I saw it.
I saw that.
A TV, two big plastic tubs.
And two beds of garbage, which I took care of.
Regular, just regular garbage.
Household garbage. It just annoyed the hell out of me, because I'm there every day, and it just annoys the hell out of me, you know.
Wait, and so people have put those in the bins?
They're putting them in the bins.
Okay, but so.
But, but guy put those in the bin then.
I did, because if we cart it down to Wyndham Softwares, it's a wash, we gotta pay for it down there. So we might as well pay for it when they take it to the dumpster. Yeah, I opened the back of the dumpster, I put it in there.
I'm not too careful doing that kind of stuff.
I know, but I, what I'm trying to do is, you know, minimize the stuff around there, because when people see stuff there, they go, oh. So what we have, the other option, going back to, what's his name, for fifty dollars a month that came in.
Fred.
Because the thing is, is that though, though I agree, we would have to pay something if we haul that down there on its own, we all, we would not have to pay a hundred and thirty dollars for someone to drive it down to Brattleboro. Which at a certain point, that's what we're doing when some amount of that garbage is in this bin, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I.
Because it's, it's increased, yeah.
It's, it's a problem, so what I've gotten from talking to other people is the only towns that are able to get this to work economically have transfer stations.
And even in need, they're in towns and say, it's horrible.
Those don't work economically.
And the transfer stations, it's a problem.
I mean, we have to have a staff. We have to have full-time.
We have to have staff.
What's this for?
Or we have, I mean, I know, why can't there be like some kind of joint partnership really between a bunch of small towns? It's like, I mean, I don't know, it's just like, why does every town have to have its own transfer station?
Got a point there.
I mean, we could, not that this changes. This doesn't change anything necessarily about what we're talking about now. Because we're now, it's, it's a bro.
We're in the realm of speculation.
I will say, at some point, if we, if we did want to consider doing something different than what we're currently doing, and dealing with the trash. and dealing with the trash situation in some different ways, it would probably be beneficial for us to have Bob Spencer, who came in here before, come back and help brainstorm on ways, because he knows what all of these other, what all towns, not just here, but in Massachusetts and elsewhere are doing. Granted, all of them, as we know, are bigger towns than us and have staff that we do not have, so most of those solutions are not gonna be viable for us, but.
But this is a real challenge for small towns.
Well, the idea.
It is. I mean, that was, and, you know, obviously, when we got into all of this, I certainly, and I think most other people, expected that our neighboring communities wouldn't just abandon it the way they have. I mean, you know, if new, I mean, the reality is, if Newfane still were providing recycling services
We would have less pressure.
and Putney was still providing recycling services.
And Athens.
Athens.
Well, Athens has never had it, though. So honestly, whatever happened for, whatever stuff, generally speaking, is coming to us from Athens, has probably always come to us from Athens. And it, but, you know, we were sharing that burden effectively with other towns because of being
Part of the country, yeah.
it was part of it, but now we're on our end, so.
But it must've been mental with the other towns. So, bottom line, the Wyndham South waste fee has gone down, but our pickup is gonna go up, so it's kind of like a, not a loss, but at least we're not getting really beat up.
It's not a loss.
Yeah, right.
Good point.
So, I mean, I.
If we put the bin out here, oh, no, that would just destroy this, the ground.
They just be using that spot for more trash, the vacant spot.
Because they're used to it. Unless you put the town yard to be a better fence for it, because it has a fence.
Yeah, the town yard would be a better place, because there's a fence.
Yeah.
But there's gonna be construction there going on, and we'll do that this year.
That's not a good spot.
Oh, because of the salt check, yeah.
That's not a good spot, because that's.
Well, and I think we're, we're getting into, as we discussed this, there's a whole bunch of different problems here. I mean, there's the trash dumping thing, but then there's also commercial use of it, legitimate, I assume, recycling materials
I assume, to some listeners or.
coming from commercial sources that were not.
We didn't anticipate.
We didn't anticipate.
I know it.
And then there's people from other communities probably recycling that we.
What do you think is the biggest burden of it, the commercial use?
But the commercial use has, has, is, has changed the amount of time that we're doing between cycles. We used to do, I was up to almost a week, then it got to five, now we're doing four, and I think because Newfane stopped their dumpsters, like Dave said, so they're finding, you know, convenient to use out dumpsters, and it's commercial stuff. You know, you can't point fingers unless I actually see them or say something, but, you know, we know what is in, maybe, I don't know, maybe better, better warnings outside may, 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 may people aware of it, because it's, say, you know, no commercial use whatsoever, you know, I, I don't know. It's a tough thing to deal with. Is it a stupid question or a stupid idea to say that if we wanted to have it picked up once a week, that at a certain point when it's full, we cut it off? I know what you're gonna say. People are gonna dump the crap, correct? I can only tell you as, as monitoring now for the last two years, and every time they go there, I clean it up, Gwen and I go over there, clean it up. And basically, if, even when it's almost full, people will not reach in.
They don't.
They'll just, they'll just dump it around side the outside, and that will happen until it gets through, you know, if you left it there for ten days, they wouldn't, you think they would take it back home? Oh, no.
Some of them don't.
They're not right there.
Some of them don't even go look on the other side to see if there's room on the other side.
You know, it's, but it's not everybody. I would say the vast majority of our residents are, are, you know, they, they pay attention, they do the law. But there's a few Weisenheimers that obviously make it bad for everyone else, yeah.
So maybe, maybe it's quite simply, we put it out there, either people have to comply or are gonna have to discontinue it. You know, like.
I guess we'll have to do, if you see something, say something, you know, uh. Or. Or you.
I don't know.
Or you send a card to, a postcard to everybody in town saying that we're having a problem, it's doubling the price of the recycling.
People have come in.
That they've lost.
That they've asked people.
And if it doesn't stop, we're gonna pull this, if you don't stop with the stuff behind it, we'll pull, we'll pull the container, so
I know someone who I knew in Brooklyn who's using the bin.
if you think you're helping yourself by keeping on dumping stuff outside, as you keep self-putting a paper.
You should clean out, you know, the bus, you know, Brooklyn.
Can we, can we have one conversation?
Send a card, guy, send a card to all the, all the, all the, all the people in town, huh? Well, I think, all right, we're trying to solve the problem, but I think basically, we have to plug in a number for the, um.
Have to put in a budget for budgeting, and when people say, why is it so high, we'll say, this is why.
Yeah.
Folks. And this is, and, and David made a good, a good, you know, case of how much it would cost per, per house at, at a fixed value, you know? I mean, we can take that number per year and divide it out, you know, in some level, some kind of fashion per, we can figure out.
Yeah, we have three hundred and thirty-six parcels. It's real easy. And when we can, when it comes up, comes up at town meeting, we have the historical history to back us, because we started this last year, a year before, a hundred years ago. And we, we've been running around about this for a long time.
The other thing I thought about, and this would take a little work, is to look for a revenue source that might offset our recycling costs from some funder, a funding source interested in environmental, you know, things, because I bet there's money out there. But it means we have to go looking for it, and God knows how much it is, or if there is, I don't know, but.
Well, I know Bob Spencer had something that they had some organization that they were taking the plastic bottles or something for.
Right, and they've.
Oh, well, yeah, that, yeah, which I, I, I spoke to those guys a long time ago, and unfortunately, the volume of what we do, they're not gonna, they're not gonna do any, we could take stuff to them, but you mean is more some kind of
I mean, more like some kind of
grant money, a sort of, that would.
nonprofit foundation, government resource.
That wants to encourage.
Something that wants to encourage recycling and understands that towns have to pick up the, the tab on this, or individuals. I don't know, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about it, the same way there are grants out there, grants out there for solar, for grants. I'm, I'm thinking about it, the same way there are grants up there, grants up there for solar, for trains. How is it going out there for, for, for handling or?
Well, the whole recycling industry is James, you know, legislation and, uh, comp, it's open, yeah, so. I mean, it's just constantly evolving, I don't know where it's going.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think Bob mentioned when he was here, I mean, it is now at the point where we are effectively paying more to get rid of recycled materials than we are to get rid of trash. There are towns that are basically encouraging or effectively saying to people, you should just throw those plastics away.
Yeah.
Because it's cheaper for us if you throw them away than if you actually recycle them. So, that's, that's inspiring.
Yeah, really.
Yeah.
From in the ocean.
I mean, I guess, I would feel, I mean, I would, I, before we had the discussion about how frequently things having to be picked up lately, I was feeling like eighteen thousand dollars is what I think we should budget for it. But now I don't know that that's remotely enough.
Well, so the worst case, the worst case scenario is if we're under budget.
And I don't know what, what we do.
Oh, that's right.
If we're under budget.
We had to wait over the net.
Yeah.
So eighteen thousand, I think, is probably more realistic.
You should put it in and see what it does.
Yeah, but. Because we went from eleven to fifteen, fifty percent.
Well, we still might be way below if.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if the every four day thing were to continue, it's, that's, like I said, that's, we're probably looking at thirty thousand dollars. It's not like we're, because unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, the increase in the rate for.
The tonnage, yeah.
The, the rate for the tonnage continues to go up, however, when it goes up and goes up and goes up, that doesn't radically impact the cost because we don't have a lot of tonnage. What radically increased the toss, cost is when we have to pick up more frequently.
Is the frequency.
Because that's a hundred and thirty bucks each time, plus the tonnage.
Hundred and thirty, yeah.
Picking.
So, really, the, the only thing we can do.
Not poor.
To keep the cost from getting horrifically out of control is we cannot.
Do for you.
Let the thing get picked up that frequently. But I don't know how we do that.
Okay, so the next question, you don't, you don't have it picked up as much and hopefully people will go.
Well, voice is dramatic, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Wait, let, finish, finish the question. So you don't have it picked up as often, who is gonna help Guy keep it picked up and cleaned up?
Okay, good point.
We've got one person that's doing it right now.
No, it's, this is really.
And I'm sorry, Guy, you've gotta, you know, it's the truth.
Yes, she's right.
She's right, this is really getting nuts and balls. But how about, if we're budgeted, if we force ourselves, excuse me, yeah, budget to once a week, let's say, once every seven days. And that, and we have a sliding fence in front of that thing, and this is getting out there a little bit. And close that fence to the road when, after that six or, before the next pickup. Let's say, I guess it's four and a half days, and the, and the town clerk sees, that's it, they're starting, they're starting to dump stuff on the outside. He's slow, he pulls that.
That's gonna do the same thing, they're gonna just dump it out.
Ideally, what I would love to see.
At, at the edge of the road or close to the edge of the road? They can't throw it, throw it on the road, they'll throw, maybe throw it in the river, maybe?
What I would love to see is what I see in the back of every single supermarket, a bin that compresses the stuff in. You know, it's an electric thing, it has a, a plug that, that pushes it in, you know.
Compactor. Compactor.
Yes. I, 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 I've thought about this a number of times. It would be that either we'd have to put it by the town yard because we need the electricity to run it, or let it itself, I don't know. But they self, uh.
We could talk to the people in Townsend, they have one at their.
Oh.
At their.
Those compact.
I mean, to find out the tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars that that costs.
Oh, that's true. See, yet I don't know.
I mean.
You're not gonna rent that boat.
Those things are not, I mean, I don't know how much.
They can't be that cheap.
I bet they're very expensive.
I know them very well from, from the library.
Would have tended to think they're probably pretty expensive, um.
And then just.
And I don't know of ones, maybe there are, but ones that, again, then we have to have someone who operates it and does it.
So, towns and, towns and do recycling? And Anita says they're transfer station.
Oh, yeah, they're getting beat up over there big time. A lumber and stuff.
Costs are getting beat up, the thing of, the thing at least they have to their advantage is, again, it's a, it's a gated, controlled situation.
Right, this kind of what Sarah says about.
So people come in and, and they can only be, you know, they're only going there if they're legitimate. And they're also taking garbage as well as, so I mean, they have a mechanism for dealing with all that stuff. If we were to have a, the thing is, if we were to have a transfer station, hypothetically, we would be legally required to also take trash. Then we have to get into.
No, I know, it's not.
Like Townsend does, we have to sell bags.
It's not, it's not economically viable for a town.
Unfortunately, it is.
I know that, but that's like why I keep thinking like, why can't we like do a joint, joint partnership?
And the other thing I'll say, this is also the reason, part of the reason perhaps, that as Newf, both Newfane and Putney started down the road of figuring out how they were gonna do stuff because they didn't wanna continue to do what they were doing, that they basically ended up abandoning it because none of the solutions were things that they could see being viable, so they didn't.
So basically, their residents follow their own stuff or do, or have somebody.
Or they pay, or hire.
Or use ours.
Or private pay, or use ours.
I, I'm very much against going into any deficit spending in, in a budget. I, I would like to suggest that we come up with a decent number for our budget and as we continue through the year, if there's a time where we have to suspend recycling services because we are going in the hole. We will have to make those announcements official to the residents and say, recycling will.
Not working.
Not recycling services are discontinued, uh, uh, because we have, we run out of budget.
I agree, you're right.
Yeah, we exceeded our budget, yeah.
We're not eliminating the Dave problem. What is it, me, what you said, which is dumping stuff down Elmore Road, dumping stuff all over town, correct? That's not eliminating that. I love that idea and it's, it almost, it almost dovetails my idea of doing the fence idea of closing the fence off the su- because we set our budget at once a week, and if at the sixth day the thing is closed, close the door, the guy's coming the next day, or the fourth, you're saying it's four, four and a half days now.
Yeah.
And to budget, and we're budgeted for what, a week?
Well, originally it would have been nice to have a week.
Three weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
So we get to Monday and that thing is full, and then on due to Wednesday, it closes fast.
Well, you can ask Anita about that when they have the bags of trash sitting in front of their fence.
Anita?
Yeah, you know, in Townsend, what happens there, that they transfer their shit, stack it right in front.
They do, they do the same.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Pay for the bags.
You know, it's, it's unfortunate, but that's what happens, you know, it's.
But that's trash.
Yeah, no, it's trash, whatever.
It doesn't matter?
Yeah, I, you know, it's, it's hard because it's only that, there's a certain element that will not abide by the rules. And that's what's, that's what's creating the problem for us.
Of course.
And that will never go away.
I mean, maybe this is something we really have to take to the town, you know, and say.
Yeah, what, what do you guys wanna do about this?
Well, that's what I was thinking, if our budget starts in July.
We'll be talking about it in hours, Anita goes.
And as we go through the year, if we're running into, uh, we're running out of funding, so when we get to March time, we have to go.
Yeah, we'll go a while. We've been. Just look, look, Doc.
I'm trying to hear Doc.
Sorry, Doc.
So we go, you know, we, it starts in July, if, if we're running on a budget, we would know in January, pretty, half the year's gone by, we're, we're not going to have enough money to, to, to continue to June. We, for the residents at town meeting next year and say, look, we're gonna have to stop recycling in May because we're out of budget.
Unless you appropriate more.
Appropriate more, and it could be something that will happen on this county, but the next county.
Oh, I'm looking.
I know, I think.
There's definitely spending going on.
I think you have a great idea, Doc.
Maybe there's a community action group that can come up with, with, with a plan, another subcommittee for short term. Ting ting.
Well, it's good to have the town understanding that we got a really small problem here. We were worried about that when we first started all these discussions.
Well, we started eleven thousand, then we went to fifteen, held on eighteen, you know, and I understand.
Yeah, we went to twelve.
Yeah.
And we stayed, we stayed pretty much on budget the first year.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and we were picking up once a week.
Yeah, two sheets, two, two bins that we're going back and forth.
Well, but that, but that, and that's, I don't, I mean, that's, that's a fair question, is, do we think there's anything? We did go down to one bin, for good reasons.
And it's worked very well.
Right, do we think there's anything about having two bins there because we could go back to having two bins there? Is there anything about going back to two bins that would allow us to
This was, uh.
Only be picking up once a week versus every four days?
Because the problem with that is they don't go to one bin, half is full, and then they start, because the other one is more accessible, they throw it in the bin that's empty, so they're, they're not filling up.
Right, my assumption, and I'm sure yours is, that we would basically, every, instead of picking up bin every four days, we would be picking up two bins every eight days. Whatever. We'd be in the same, we'd be in the same situation.
The one bin seems to.
No, because they can't, because the trucker cannot hold two of them at the same time.
Exactly.
So they have to make two trips.
And you can't tie them because they come to ties.
And that's the same amount of cost.
Do they?
Yeah, kind of, yeah.
I mean, I think at some point though, we do kind of.
Okay, well, how many bins are there, how many are there for the forty five?
I, I, some, I think I have four, and I think one I have three, but they were four, and I, you know, I.
Locks on with, with.
Well, no, but you're getting away from the, the issue.
Well, and then, right, and then that just create, then people are just gonna dump it outside.
Yeah, they're gonna get annoyed and.
Yeah, yeah, they're gonna get annoyed.
I think like Doc said, you know, when we get to a point where we see our budget being beat up, uh, then will, the select board can make a decision, they don't have to have the town saying.
That's true.
Uh, we've reached our budget and we're gonna discontinue the, uh.
For the rest of the year, I believe.
Right, although I guess we should just be prepared for the possibility that that's going to be March sixth this year.
Yeah.
If that's, if that's what we're saying, because I don't see any way that we're not gonna go over our budget for this fiscal year.
Yeah. Where are we now?
Let alone what we end up deciding in the future.
We're sorry, I'm gonna go to the future.
And should we communicate that? I mean, should the select board communicate that to people so they know that once the budget has been reached, we will discontinue recycling, town recycling services?
Do you wanna put it in the town report?
And is that really what we're gonna do?
I don't know.
And do we really think that's?
What's the logistics of doing that?
Do we wanna do it in town report? Do I wanna put it in the county report and then have it as an article to be discussed at town meeting?
Well, yeah.
Well, there's the advantage of that, because you get the entire town involved in the problem.
You have forty three people, yeah.
Forty three people who show up involved.
Yeah, the other thing is that unfortunately, the forty three people.
That's a different, we don't wanna get into it, man.
The forty three people that show up are not the people that are creating any of this problem.
Good piece.
So what I'll say is, as, I bet, it's too bad Gary's not here, he could vouch for this, because I'm sure he would say this. I think most of the people who will show up at town meeting would say, only pick it up once a week. If I go and it's full, I'll come back in a few days.
Good point.
And why would we not do that? Why wouldn't that be the first step? We would try to do to control the.
Because they're responsible.
I can only, I mean.
I know the reality is that other people are then gonna dump things, but in a way.
And that's, it's your call.
That's a different problem.
I can only see the ugliness of it.
Kind of.
Yeah.
I know we're trying to solve a bunch of different, a bunch of problems, but.
All right, I, I can see what you're saying.
The trash dumping is, is a separate thing, people not, people not adhering to the fact that a bin is full and throwing it on the ground is a separate problem.
And the trash dumping, it's a problem continually.
It is, it is.
It is.
I mean, unfortunately.
I think I'm hearing is that we as the select, I think maybe we need to take a look at just doing, uh, Friday pickups and then having it cleaned up just for the weekends, and if we see more, uh, you know, we can do a list or we can put it in a front porch, I don't know, communicate with the, the residents, but I think we're gonna have to reduce the amount of pickups, that's what's causing. And if there's trash there, then we, then we're a little hot to, uh, I mean, the gentleman that we had, I thought he was on call for fifty dollars to, to clean up stuff, I didn't realize he was on salary, fifty dollars a week.
Well, it was, it wasn't like a salary, it was.
No, it was, it was a second.
On call.
For pickup, right?
That when he picked up, then he, when he charged fifty bucks. When we saw stuff that needed to be picked up, he dipped up and then we got the, whatever.
And he sent us a bill for fifty dollars and it was fifty dollars a month, unless there was a special request.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's funny, the more we talk about it, the more.
Which there were, like, county charter.
Like, have a charge for that, the recycling.
Yeah, well, and, yeah, because it just.
I couldn't help it, it's. So, can't come be somewhere, are we?
But again, I mean, I, you know, I know, I say that knowing that it is going to cost.
Well, Chris, this is gonna be real.
My household considerably more money to deal with it. Um, if we do that, and I think it will cost most of our townspeople more money to deal with it.
Oh, yeah.
And it doesn't change anything about the trash dumping problem we have.
Yeah, right.
I'd argue it probably will increase the trash dumping problem we have.
Oh, absolutely.
Which is still something we're gonna have to spend money.
At least in the short one, because the people are gonna be pissed off.
Right, and I, I mean, and I do genuinely believe that this is a service that we should offer.
I'd like to recommend that we place eighteen hun- eighteen thousand dollars on the budget for recycling for two thousand twenty, twenty year, and it can be something that is discussed at the town, an item line that can be brought up in, in particular at the town hall.
You go, hey, say, what you're doing, Doc, if you're playing to Davis, it could go to thirty thousand bucks.
Well, I mean.
Right?
Well, but again, not if we decide we're only picking up once a week.
We say, once a week, period.
And if that means, but, but what we're not dealing with in that, and I think maybe we should start to consider putting back the money that we took out for trash removal of figuring some situation where it's, it's not reasonable for the town clerk to be.
Absolutely.
Dealing with trash dumping at that site.
That brings the cost up to about fifty four dollars per parcel of land in, in Brooklyn at eighteen thousand, which is far cheaper, far cheaper than having.
Absolutely.
I won't argue that, but it's not gonna stop, that's the point.
So you wanna put six hundred dollars back in for trash removal?
Well, I, I mean.
We're not talking three, five percent of it.
Why do they just call?
I mean, I think, I think it's true, given the information that we have right now and what we think we might somewhat be able to control, because so much of this is out of our control. I do think budgeting eighteen thousand dollars is what we should do.
I, I agree, um, and then putting it down to one pickup per week, period.
Uh, I don't know about, well, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I wanna say, but I'm not the one who has it, but, and that's where we were saying when you're out of room. I think we need to figure out a solution for dealing with the trash situation at that site. Maybe whatever elsewhere in town is elsewhere in town, but you shouldn't be the one who's having to.
Right. Thought I did it because I, I thought it would.
Oh, yeah, no, I, right.
Would help, and it did help for, for the longest time, but just lately, there's been an uptick. Now, I don't know if that's relative to the amount of houses that we've sold or something like that, you know, turnaround in house. I don't know, but I know in the last month, like David said, the last month or six weeks, our costs have ticked up considerably, we went from once a week to once every five, six days, now it's down to four days. And, you know, uh, I, I don't know the answer, I'll be honest with you.
And may, I, this is a hard question to answer, and maybe you don't know the answer, but when, when we're picking up, when the bin, I mean, how much of that do you think is actually trash?
I think we need to ask the, the company that charges us.
Versus, it just didn't increase in recycling, you know what I mean? Again, I think there's, we have a whole bunch of different problems that we're kind of getting behind.
Put it in one big barrel, yeah, yeah. This, I would like to, again, we, uh, put eighteen thousand dollars into the recycling budget with the understanding that we keep an eye on it on a regular basis, and as we get close to, you know, we have to decide again during to the, or bring out the select board, uh, town meeting, the, the concerns we have. It is cheaper to do it this way, right, and for, for people that.
Ultimately, town meeting decides, so, you know, we can put in a number.
We can take a look, we, we've been.
And people turn it down, they turn to them?
Fiscally responsible and working with the surplus, I mean, we, we.
See, now we're digging into surplus, it covers.
You know, this is.
Well, they discussed this on budget time, so it's gonna be the town deciding.
My other question is, besides taking a look at this figure, and I don't know if we're set on that or not, is do we need any additional money or staffing keys for, that we should consider checking in?
That was the six hundred trash pick, six hundred dollar trash pickup, that would be.
To piggyback on this recycling.
So that if we had to call him to, to call him to come to dump.
Trash removal.
Jutris, uh, the Jutris.
The TV or whatever it was.
The, the trash removal, we went from six hundred to zero, you wanna put that back in?
So do we know for sure that this guy, wasn't there some discussion last year or earlier this year about not even doubt if he's available?
He's available, he's available, I, I, he's, he's not going and determining for himself, he needs to call, say, there's a mess down here and needs to be cleaned up, can you do it today?
And what is the, right, and so, and the arrangement is, if we called him and asked him to go pick up whatever trash stuff is down there.
Fifty bucks.
He charges us fifty bucks a trip?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we should.
If he's still available.
Yes.
We have a basis of it, oh, he doesn't?
Sure. That's right, I see it.
So, yeah, to your point, I, I think we should consider putting that money back in the budget.
Okay, just that.
So that we have some other options other than Guy dealing with it.
So would you put that, would that be part of the recycling cost?
Well, no, I think it's back to the trash removal.
Back to the trash removal on page five.
Because the other thing I'd like to say is, not that, that is a different cost.
Trash removal is a, is a few, is a few lines up.
It shouldn't be lumped into, it's just recycling, because it isn't recycling.
It's one, two, three, four, five lines up from recycling.
So we're doing five hundred?
Six hundred.
Six hundred, we just level one, two, and nineteen.
It's just what we did last year.
Wow, that's a potential.
So we change that to six hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's worth a try, I mean, you know, we're.
Could be if someone to call and, and does he need to be vendor packaged and vendor?
Yes, but I could do that, I know how to do that. Did you pick up the vendor package?
No, he did not, we have it.
Okay, you've got it somewhere.
Because he has, because he didn't call me back. Come work there and then I was gonna piggyback over that.
Are, are there any other staffing or increases that you think that the town leaders should consider at this time, any other items?
Well, there was a property management, uh, thing that was thrown around, uh.
Property management?
You know, for the school and the, uh, and the, uh, building commission. Building, whatever it was.
They call the building commission, would kind of oversee all the running of all the buildings, because when we first bought these buildings back in twenty fourteen, it was like, okay, so like, well, there you go, you got the whole building.
Would it be the meeting house and?
And building.
All of them.
All the buildings, the round schoolhouse, you're gonna, yeah.
I didn't say I wasn't.
It's gonna be on top of it.
There's nothing to do.
Somebody should, because simple five hundred dollars they ended up with a huge, I'd like to.
Right, somebody should be watching it, exactly.
Well, you have two, excuse me, there's two alternatives, either appoint somebody or give the authority to the people that are there to call the designated vendors that we have.
Correct. Which is what we're gonna do with Sunny Lane daycare. I think, I don't plan on, let's say if I was doing it, I wouldn't do the former, I would do the way you're doing that, talking about.
Yeah.
Call upon, give Tina and, and Olivia the, 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 the authorization to call Jeffers, to call Scott and then notify us afterwards.
Approved vendors, how, I mean, we should, we should come up with a procedure for that.
I think this would have to be.
And it would have to have a dollar, dollar limit tacked onto it so that they can't say, well, we need to remodel, it's gonna be twenty thousand dollars.
I think this needs to be put on the agenda for.
This is perfect.
Another agenda, yeah.
Yeah, this is for emergency situation, not for them to do.
I'm looking at, that's not the question I asked, though.
This isn't.
Yeah, yeah, go back to.
This is not the question I asked. I'm looking at town operating expenditures on page three, I'm looking at adding a, uh, uh, building supervisor, building commission, building supervisor position for a five hundred dollar stipend to go in, this is two thousand twenty, twenty.
Where are the buildings?
So like, under, under the salaries, we're select board road commissioner, you're in, looking for a building commissioner or buildings, building manager.
But this, we're gonna, this is a very roundabout way to do this. We don't even have this position or figured out this position, so I think it's.
But you can budget it. And then.
Well, I, I would already, I don't think we should though.
Do I? Why should we budget?
Because, I mean, we had a road commissioner for.
Ever.
Ever, that only now has a stipend, we had an animal patrol officer forever, but only now has a stipend, so I don't think it's necessarily given that even if we did create a position, that it would have a stipend.
Because realistically speaking, there's not a, a huge amount of work involved normally.
Done with round one.
Because it's, some of these buildings are never done with. Rod Schoolhouse, Salt Shed, what has been done with the meeting house this year, nothing. The only work that's ever been done this year, really, to, in, in great detail, has been, has been schools, has been.
But isn't the whole idea of appointing somebody to do that is for them to check the buildings regularly?
The whole idea is.
And again, this is, this is all, right, it's, this is, yeah, this isn't.
It's probably one of these things, it's probably the only one. Okay, all right, ladies and gentlemen, let's take a look here on our current agenda items, if we are finished with.
Can I, can I tell you what happens next?
Yes, Maris, you said.
Well, this is round one, so we're going to.
Round one is, I'm gonna put in all the numbers on Friday.
Okay.
And then I'm going to email you an updated budget worksheet.
Okay.
And attached to that.
Which is gonna look like the same thing.
It's gonna look like, exactly like this, but attached with it will be an estimated, what the heck does this do to our tax rate?
Now, the question.
With the numbers we've put in.
Has nothing to do with the twenty, twenty thousand surplus.
I won't deal with the surplus until we talk about what we're doing with the surplus.
Okay, this is just what we've done.
I'll put in what we've done without consideration of whether or not we apply any amount of the surplus to the numbers.
That's all I know, okay, so it's just these numbers, okay.
Okay, so we'll take a look at the estimated tax base based upon these new numbers at the next select board meeting, which is December nineteenth.
Right.
And then what happens after that?
Then you either, you either like what it looks like or we tweak the numbers some more.
And vote on it.
And then. We don't vote on it yet.
And then we finalize the budget.
Right.
In January.
Then by the first meet, the first meeting in January, right after the new year, we look at the numbers and you go, yeah, this is good, and then you can write your final warnings and do everything, and by then, the auditors, because they always work over their school break, so, you know, to work for school boards, will have audited the numbers and letting know if there's any big issues that they find. So we'll know if we have any weird stuff that might impact the surplus, which I don't think there is, but there might be. Because I, I do have an eraser on my pencil here.